Please take your seats, please. Get this going. Okay. I'd like to reopen the meeting. Okay, item number four. Fire station number one in Balboa Branch Library Landscape Changes Appeal. This is PA 2025-0130. It's, the site location is 100 East Balboa Boulevard. Staff?
Yes, Chair Harris. I just wanted to note this project is a city project, and so the city is the applicant on this item. And then I just wanted to introduce Lada Rodriguez. She's one of our assistant planners, and this is our first presentation to the commission, so I just wanted to introduce you.
Ms. Rodriguez, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harris and commissioners. Again, Laura Rodriguez. I am the project planner for staff approval for the fire station number one and Balboa Branch Library Landscape Changes Appeal. The site is located on the Balboa Peninsula on the corner of East Balboa Boulevard and Island Avenue. The subject property currently carries two existing public facilities, one being the Balboa Branch Library that was constructed in 1929, and the other being fire station number one that has been operating since 1962. Just want to start off with some project background. On March 5th, 2024, PBNR Commission had approved the removal of two diseased special city landmark trees, that being a blue gum eucalyptus and Canary Island date palm tree. That action was then appealed to City Council and subsequently heard on September 24th, 2024, where City Council denied the appeal and upheld PBNR Commission's approval of the removal of the trees and also approved coastal development permit for the construction of fire station number one and Balboa Branch Library. City Council's action was then appealed to the California Coastal Commission. The appeal primarily expressed concerns over the removal of the blue gum eucalyptus tree and how its removal would be displacing nesting birds such as great blue herons. This ultimately led to the city and the Coastal Commission staff in collaborating on the appropriate landscape revisions as far as replacement tree species that would serve as alternatives that would best serve nesting birds such as great blue herons. Given that the revised landscape plan was collaborated with the Coastal Commission, it ultimately led to staff approval that was approved by the Community Development Director, which approved these landscape changes to this coastal development permit. That action was then appealed to the Planning Commission, which is the item that is going to be heard today. Some brief background, the council approved CDP project. The approval included a 10,900 square foot building that would be approximately 33 feet 6 inches tall. It will carry along the rear of the property a 3,675 square foot green space and a 1,500 square foot playground. The staff approval has no change to these project components, and these are the trees that were approved for removal. So we have the Canary Island date palm tree along East Balboa Boulevard and the blue gum eucalyptus tree along East Bay Avenue. The tree removal was approved by City Council, and I just want to clarify that that is not a part of today's staff approval. Ultimately, the purpose of this project is going to be improving landscaping to better support nesting birds such as great blue heron. This revised landscape plan came as a result of the collaboration with the California Coastal Commission staff. And prior to this revised landscape plan being proposed, DUDAC had also evaluated the plan and reaffirmed that western sycamore trees would be an appropriate replacement that would serve heron nesting activity. It also did confirm that there are existing trees surrounding the property that would best support these nesting birds during the reconstruction and replanting phase of this project. Today's, the project will be for staff approval for minor changes to the CDP landscape plan. So you can see over to your left, the originally approved CDP landscape plan had originally proposed California sycamore trees along East Bay Avenue and Catalina Ironwood trees along Island Avenue. After the collaboration with Coastal Commission and the DUDAC memorandum that supported the revised landscape plan, the revised landscape plan will now be carrying western sycamore trees along Island Avenue and East Bay Avenue, and within the parking lot, a sweet shade and Australian willow tree will be placed. The appellant expressed concerns in his appeal related to the California Environmental Quality Act abbreviated as SEQA, and its exemptions, that the replacement trees aren't sufficient for nesting birds on site, and that the blue gum eucalyptus tree is considered an environmentally sensitive habitat area abbreviated as ESHA for great blue herons. As far as SEQA exemptions, the project is appropriate for Class II replacement or reconstruction, given the fact that the original CDP did approve for the existing fire station and library to be replaced, and a reconstructed building would be located on the same project site. The use will not be changing as a result of the reconstruction, and today's staff approval project revisions are primarily affecting landscaping. Therefore, the revisions would not be affecting the Class II exemption. The exceptions to Class II do not apply to this project. A memorandum was also prepared by DUDAC that was related to the property and the blue gum eucalyptus tree and whether that is considered to be an environmentally sensitive habitat area. The report did confirm that the site is not considered an environmentally sensitive habitat area due to its existing development. Under the city's Title 21 local coastal program, ESHSAs do not include existing development. And the blue gum eucalyptus tree was also affirmed not to be considered ESHA, given that it is non-native, it is not a rare species, and it does not play a special role in the ecosystem. That same report also confirmed that the great blue heron is not a federally protected bird, is not considered an endangered species, and it's also considered a secure species. However, I do want to clarify that any active nests on the property are protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, and the project is conditioned to comply with that act. Staff's recommendation to Planning Commission is to determine that these landscape changes aren't substantial conformance with CDP number PA 2024-0140 and adopt resolution number PC 2025-021 to deny the appeal and affirm the Community Development Director's approval of staff approval number PA 2025-0130. If this item is approved, a notice of final action of this staff approval will be provided to the California Coastal Commission, which will supplement the review of their pending CDP appeal. This concludes my presentation. Thank you again, commissioners. I am available for questions, and Jim Houlihan on behalf of Public Works is also available for additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Excellent presentation. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Saleen?
On one of the first slides, you said that the eucalyptus and the other tree were diseased. What, what does that mean? Are they dying, or are they going to, are they, what's, what does that mean?
I mean, so that was part of the review by the Parks Beaches and Recreation Commission. They first reviewed the removal of the landmark trees. Under policy G1, our council policy G1, there are certain reasons that would allow for the removal of special landmark trees, and disease or decaying is a reason. And so there is a number of investigations done to the tree, and it determined that the trees were decaying at an accelerated pace, and that was part of the support for the removal of the tree.
Mr. Rose?
Can you clarify for all of us, the Migratory Bird Act and nesting birds? And since herons aren't migratory here in this climate, what exactly is a nesting bird, then? Is that a bird that has a fledling in it, or is that because it's active? What would be, how will that be handled?
My understanding and working with the biologist is the herons are protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, but it's not the habitat itself, it's the active nesting is what's protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. So, under the law, there's, removal of any nest is prohibited between nesting season, which is February through August, and then any removal of trees does require monitoring by biologists to ensure that there's no impacts. Construction can occur around active nests, however, there's buffers and other measures that would be required.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, any ex parte communication?
None.
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 Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does the appellant want to make a presentation or provide comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Before I start, I want to first thank city staff, although we disagree on the issues. They've been courteous throughout the process, and I do really appreciate that. I want to jump, I wasn't planning to do this, but I want to jump right on Commissioner Saleen's comment about the diseased trees. Trees are not diseased. In fact, the report, which is now two years old and is stale and needs to be renewed, did not show that the trees were diseased. They in fact showed that in many areas, the trees were improving. There was some decay, which you can look at any tree, and you're going to find some decay. So this conclusory statement that the trees are diseased is simply not true. But let me get into the appeal. This is an appeal from staff approval, PA 2025-0130, as was stated, and this purports to be a modification of a CDP that was approved by the City Council in 2024. Now, I've read the staff report a number of times, and interestingly to me, it repeatedly refers to these changes as minor changes. And that's ironic, because that's actually the problem. The problem here is that these changes are minor, and what is needed is more. And I think we heard from the staff report, they were also referred to as minor changes. And the problem is, is that it doesn't address these minor changes, don't address the fundamental problem with the CDP that was approved in 2024. One of the most fundamental problems with the CDP is that it ignores the city of Newport Beach's own policies, specifically the G1 tree policy. The city's policy is to retain what are referred to as special city trees. I didn't hear any reference during the staff report. I heard a reference to the blue gum eucalyptus not being rare, not being native. I didn't hear any reference to it being a landmark tree of this city, and that's important. The policy states that all special trees shall be retained unless there are overriding problems which will require their removal, such as death, disease, interference with infrastructure, or the creation of a hazardous condition. Yet the CDP ignored this policy and authorized the removal of the landmark special tree without any compelling reason to do so. And that, again, I'm referring to the blue gum eucalyptus tree, which is up before the Coastal Commission right now. And it is an active great blue heron nesting site. You might see video of that tonight, I'm not sure. I've seen it today, and you may see it tonight. The City Council when it approved the CDP at issue relied on an arborist that was incentivized to come to a particular conclusion. And as I said, that report is now stale by two years. Since we're dealing with a landmark tree, which is not in dispute, I would submit that there needs to be a new tree assessment done, that's right in the G1 policy. That is something that the appellant would be willing to contribute to if not pay for. No downside to the city in doing that. And getting to the bottom of this idea, that this tree is so diseased and problematic that it needs to be just uprooted at the expense of the great blue herons. Now, getting to the minor changes that we have heard about, they do nothing to address the problems with the CDP. What it's called is a CDP landscape plan. But what really is it? Apparently, the plan is to add some western sycamore trees, and this again is to purportedly address this issue with the blue herons nesting sites. But what is that going to do? Are these going to be large, mature trees that are ready for nests? Of course not. These trees take decades to mature. Not an arborist, is my understanding. At the end of the day, we are talking about cosmetic changes, cosmetic changes, that do nothing to address the fundamental problems with the CDP that was approved here. As a result, the Community Development Director's approval of staff approval 2025-0130 should be rejected, and this appeal should be granted. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Please, no clapping, thank you. Thank you. Any questions for the appellant, commissioners, this time? Appellant? Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Vardanton Mahoney. I am a resident of the city of Newport Beach and consider myself to be a friend of the library park. Now, I've been following this matter closely. I've been here before, speaking at City Council meetings, and I read the staff report that was published last Friday pretty closely. Now, what stood out to me about that staff report was about the position that it currently takes as to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. Previously, the city's position was that this project was exempt under three categories of SEQA. But in the current staff report, it says that only one SEQA exemption applies, which I take to mean that we are now in agreement that two out of the three exemptions that the city originally relied on are simply irrelevant. And I'm here to ask you to also agree that the third and final exemption also doesn't apply. That exemption, known as the Class II exemption, per the report, applies when there's a reconstruction or a replacement of a structure with a comparable structure with a substantially similar purpose, a like-for-like swap. That's kind of the issue here, right? We don't have a fireplace, or a fire station being replaced with a fire station, and a library being replaced with a library. You have a library being replaced with a fire station, and a fire station being replaced with a library. It's the inverse. And if we want to go broader, if we want to look at the site as a whole, I think we run into the exact same problem, because the site that we currently have has a closed park, and that's where the great blue herons are, that's where the landmark blue gum eucalyptus tree is. So you'd expect to see that in the current project, we'd get another park, right? But that isn't what we have. Instead of a park, we have a children's playground, and a children's playground, to me, simply cannot even remotely come close to the park that has been so valuable to this neighborhood for decades on end. So I would submit, and I would ask you to hopefully agree with us, that the project, whether viewed from the level of the specific structures, or viewed broadly in terms of the structures and the park, the current, what's currently being offered is not a like-for-like swap, and therefore, the second SEQA exemption does not apply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Adam Leverens again. My familiarity with that tree and the ones that used to be there and have been cut down already goes back to about 2008. I've been seasonal here for longer than that, but that's when I first started paying attention to this particular part of town. If you haven't been there, when the birds, the herons are nesting, it's amazing, it's like you're on the savanna in Africa. If it goes away, I'll never see that again in my lifetime, which probably isn't a big deal, but for lots of people that, and kids, I mean, the loss of that tree is significant. I recall, you know, I've been to a number of meetings where this has been the subject matter. Tonight, it's kind of coincidental for me, but I recall that, well, you know, the moving the library and the fire station, alternating positions, that's kind of why the tree had to go. And then I heard the rationale that, well, the tree would die during construction anyway, so we might as well cut the tree down. And I seem to recall that in addition to the city arborist, at some point, there was another arborist who contested the city arborist's findings, and I've seen a number of instances where there's conflicting data, but the city data supports the outcome, and so the other data is completely ignored. I would like to see some difference in that. And as the gentleman mentioned, this is two years old, maybe another look now. I recall seeing percentages of speculative decay in the tree, estimates of how long it would live, and most of these things allow adequate time for a second look. And given, like I say, I'm kind of a nature lover person, and I think it's worthy of a second look. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is April Strong, and I live down the street from this tree and have for nearly 30 years. So, thank you, I wanted to say thank you first for hearing me tonight. Our group has been working tirelessly to try to think of every possible avenue to save our tree. We've had appeals, community outreach, phone calls to environmental experts, et cetera. At this point, we once again implore you to rethink what you're doing. The blue gum eucalyptus has a lifespan of 200 to 400 years. That's long. In fact, in milder climates such as ours, they typically live into the higher end of that span. As our tree is about 100 years old, killing this tree would be ending its life at only 25% of its potential existence. It should be here not only for our children, but for our children's children five generations from now. Please rework this demolish and rebuild plan to honor and respect this tree. Humans are smart problem solvers. You, committee members, the builders, the architects, and all involved with this are perfectly capable of creating a beautiful space that honors nature and this beloved tree and her heron inhabitants. Rebuilding the library around this healthy gorgeous tree is our collective responsibility, and you are the stewards. Think about the legacy you would leave to future generations who would see your hearts and your care in this pivotal moment. Think deeply about the years, the families, the decades this tree has provided shade, oxygen, a place to climb, a home for countless heron over the years. Don't destroy this sacred being. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sage Garcia, and I'm also a concerned resident. I'm here to make the point that the landmark tree should be given protection as an environmentally sensitive area. The city's own municipal code defines an ESHA as an area where, quote, "plant or animal life or their habitats are either rare or are especially valuable because of their special nature or role in an ecosystem that could easily be disturbed or degraded by human activities and developments," end quote. That's exactly what's happening here. The blue gum eucalyptus tree does play a special role in this ecosystem, as it's the nesting tree for nearly two dozen great blue heron birds, and it's been a nesting site here for decades. Blue herons are unable to nest in nearby trees because they're not nearly as tall, they don't contain as much foliage, and they leave the birds in their nests vulnerable and exposed, which is the reason that the nesting sites, those other trees, currently don't have any nests. The city claims that this habitat doesn't have a special nature because the blue herons aren't rare or endangered, I'll give you that, but the blue herons are explicitly protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, making them federally protected birds. Regardless, the city's code says that habitats that, one, are valuable to an ecosystem, the tree clearly is, and, two, can be easily disturbed, which would happen with this development, are protected as ESHAs. The city also says in its recent staff report that ESHAs don't include existing developed areas. I'm not here to argue, I'm not here to argue that the fire station or the library should be given ESHA protection. I don't think anyone here is against a new fire station or a new library. We're here to say that the landmark tree is an ESHA and that the tree deserves protection. The city also claims that the tree does not play a special role in the ecosystem. This is also from the recent staff report, saying, quote, "that the tree is simply ornamental landscaping." But the birds clearly don't see this tree as just ornamental landscaping. The tree has long been the home of those federally protected birds, and therefore has special importance, as the city acknowledged by designating it as a special landmark status tree. Given that the tree has special value and has an important role in the ecosystem, I think it's clear that it deserves ESHA status and deserves to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Harris and members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I am not an arborist or a blue heron, so I can't really speak to their preferences of what kind of sycamore tree they like or don't like. But looking at figure four on handwritten page seven, which is the comparison of the council-approved plan that went to the Coastal Commission and the staff-revised plan, I see changes, numerous changes, that seem unrelated to just changing the species of the tree, but I also see a reduction in the number of trees. And if I was a bird looking for a nesting place, I would think more trees would be a better option than fewer trees, so I have not heard an explanation of why the number of trees is being reduced. I also am not totally understanding why we're even here, because when something like that original plan is appealed to the Coastal Commission, if the Coastal Commission staff thinks that is not an approvable project, they usually go back to the applicant, or frequently do this, and suggest, maybe if we changed it in this way, it would be approved by the commission. And they kind of do that on their own initiative, and at least I've seen this with private projects, and the Coastal Commission staff says that with modifications, it could be approved. So I'm not sure why we're not just doing that. If this is truly something that they think is approvable, why wouldn't it have been done before? So... Maybe it's in the interest of transparency. I think though even public projects, they have recommended a modified project for approval. They certainly do that with ordinances that we propose to them, and we don't have to go back and redo the ordinance, it comes back to, are we accepting it or not? So I'm not understanding, and would like to know why the number of trees is being reduced, and why we're having to go through this process again. And also, it's kind of curious to me, I think the appeal is still going on, so if you approved this, and this was not appealed, but the other one, different plan, was appealed, and the Coastal Commission approved the appeal, what is happening there? It just seems like this is creating more confusion, and I don't understand why. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair Harris, fellow commissioners. My name is Jim Maloney. You probably haven't seen me before, but I've been before the City Council and the Parks Beaches and Recreation Commission meetings for the last, I'd say, five or 10 years. I got involved in trees when the city decided that 42 trees on Marine Avenue were sick and dying, just all 42. and dying, just all 42 of them, had to come out for some reason. And a group was formed of residents called the Balboa Island Preservation Association, the BIPA, of which I am a member and on their board. And we hired an arborist, and we went out there, and guess what? Those trees were not sick and dying. And we brought the evidence to the city council and the parks, beaches, and recreation, and it turned into a big brouhaha. But ultimately, we prevailed, and all those trees on Marine Avenue are still there. We did lose three or four in the process while we were going through all these, but the community residents were outraged that they were told these trees were sick and dying. So the folks that are here tonight, the Friends of Library Park, they reached out to the BIPA and said, Jim, could you come over and take a look at the situation? And I happen to own multiple properties within 500 yards of this tree. So it's not just, you know, hey, I'm going to go over to the peninsula and see what's going on. So I went and I looked at the tree, and I went and I talked to the, I came to the PB&R meetings and the city council meetings, and I read the G1 tree policy, and I, we made presentations, and I'm just want to, I'm here to just give you a little background so you understand what's happening here. Yes, there is a coastal commission appeal. It's still pending. Jim Mosher is absolutely right. The tree, the tree is not sick and dying. There were two reports done by the city arborist, one four years ago and one two years ago, and the report showed decay of 1%. If I went into your mouth as a dentist, I'm sure I could find decay of 1%. And over a number of years, it went from 1% to 2 or 3%. And the city made the case, the city staff or the arborists, well, that went from 1% to 3%. That's a 200% increase. And if the 200% increase continues at this rate, it will just go, and this tree will be a big safety risk. And when I went out and others went out, we pooled our money, and we hired the most notable arborist in the state of California. His name is Rob Booty. He has been commissioned by Stanford University. I don't know if you're familiar with the El Toro tree. It's a big redwood. It's like one of the largest redwoods in the state of California, and if you have any children that have gone to Stanford or you went to Stanford yourself, you've seen the logo. He has been commissioned by the city of El Palo. We brought him down here at $5,000 or $6,000 to look at this tree. We went out to test it, and you know what happened? The city staff, the parks, beaches, the public works people flew out of the beehive and they stopped us from testing the tree. I was shocked. What do you mean? I don't think, the testing involves putting a rope around the trunk of the tree, and it's a sonic tomography. It's like what a woman gets to see how the baby's doing, sends sound waves. It's not that complicated. It would have been just $2,000 or $3,000 for a local arborist to do, but I had to get somebody up north. So I'll leave it with, just so you understand, the tree is not sick and dying, and the reason the city wants the tree removed is because they want to swap the location of the firehouse and the library, which is fine. Nobody here wants to stop that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Absolutely.
My name is Joyce Flower. I live at 1001 West Bay, so I'm five blocks away from the library. And my concern is of a little bit of a different nature. I've been an almost 50-year public educator, and I've worked with a lot of librarians during my tenure as a teacher, and we are still absolutely shocked that a playground is being placed behind the library. I heard it described as a complementary to the library, and every librarian that I spoke to said, it's in direct conflict. If you want the children to be inside reading books and in a quiet environment, the playground is not that at all. And also, my concern on that same level is we have homeless people that are very apparent in the area, and playgrounds, it's just a haven for homeless people. I'm concerned that the design hasn't been modified so that a playground doesn't exist behind the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hi, my name is Annie Saunders. I'm here to talk about the local coastal plan. The Friends of the Library Park appeals have stressed that the city lacks a coherent local coastal plan with concrete articulable standards for protecting the landmark tree and the nesting blue herons. After the Friends of the Library Park cited these concerns in its appeal to the California Coastal Commission, the city went on retreat. It functionally conceded that the nesting blue herons lack meaningful protections and offered a purported remedy of planting the western sycamore trees. But these western sycamore trees will not mature for 20 to 30 years, meaning that they cannot protect these blue herons now. And the planting of a single tree will not address the glaring deficiencies of the local coastal plan. Rather than offering half measures, the city should revise its local coastal plan and offer concrete protections before it undertakes to remove this landmark tree and disrupt the blue heron's habitat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing what I have to say, and thank you for being here. My name is Lisa Clifford. I, my family has owned a home on Anade Avenue since the early 70s, and I purchased it from the family and owned it for the last 30-some years and reside there now. That corner green space with that large tree is extremely special to the neighborhood and its character, and I think to the health of the neighborhood as well. You've heard that, you've heard many people say the same thing. You know, as humans, we really need some green space, and humans and animals, we need the green space. And as property owners, the city thought we needed green space as well, so much so that we were told a few years ago that we needed to adopt and embrace added green belts in front of our homes, and that we would be caring for these green belts to add extra peace and greenery and elevate the area and the feeling and the health of the area. And I totally agree. I think that the added green space in front of our streets on Anade looks fabulous, and I think it feels so much healthier, and it elevates probably the property values and the health of the area. So I do not understand why, on a public project, that we would be, that you are taking away green space, that you are taking away shade trees, this beautiful landmark tree that offers so much shade and so much greenery in an area that has quite a bit of cement and street. So then, why are we reducing the green space in this project by taking away the trees and taking away the grass and adding more cement and parking spaces? I implore the council and the planning commission to try to find a way to rebuild a really tasteful library and fire department, so important to the neighborhood, but also do two things at once and find a way to save this green space that is so important and save this landmark tree. I mean, the whole, I don't know why we can't do two things at once. And the whole thing kind of brings to mind that Joni Mitchell song, I mean, pave paradise and put up a parking lot. I do not know why we can't have paradise of that green space and that wonderful landmark tree protecting the herons and an incredible fire department and new library as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you. I've been sitting in the back, and I see all six of you.
Please state your name for the record.
Sure. I'd just like to say thank you for paying attention and for really listening, because I've been watching this and I really appreciate.
Could you please state your name?
I'm Kristy Jacob, and I own two homes on the peninsula, one on Edgewater and one on Anade, about six doors from the tree. This is a really cool tree, and every morning, I walk to my galley, get a cup of coffee, look up at the birds. You can hear them, it's a beautiful sound, and when my grandchildren come over, they want to go and see the pterodactyls. And it's just a really cool sight to see, to see the babies, to see the parents, and to listen to them, and to see everything that's happening. So I just wanted to ask, have any of you seen the tree?
You know, it's actually not a time to ask us any questions.
It's not.
It's just your statement.
Okay, then I would ask you to please go and take a little field trip, take your kids or your grandchildren, and go and look at the tree before you make a decision to deny. Hopefully, it will be to support and approve, but take a field trip, go and see how cool this tree is. Go and see the birds, see the nests, see the babies, and know that we really love it. I mean, in our neighborhood, there are signs everywhere in support of this tree. There's a lot of neighbors here, but the amount of neighbors here is not indicative of the vast number of people who are so in favor of saving this tree. We really want it, we need it, it's just a really cool landmark for us, and I would just suggest that all of you take a field trip and go and see it, and bring your grandchildren and your children. And as far as the library goes, I think they could use it as a great teaching opportunity too, and, you know, host events to go and learn about the great blue heron and to see it, you know, right out their back door. So, anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
I'd start off with, my name is Michelle Silver, and I've lived in my house right down the street from that tree and that park for 47 years, raising my children. I was told by my children to just give you the facts, because they said that's probably the best way to explain the situation. You've heard all the other people that have spoken tonight. We've done this before at the city council meetings. We've tried to express how much this particular place means to our location. I don't know where any of you live, but everyone near me, and it's quite a few blocks, we know each other. We know each other's names. I've heard you talk about a location up off of, you know, above, I forget now where it was, up in Costa Mesa, I used to work up there. And you talk as though, what a lovely area. Well, ours is extremely special. The people that live there, they are there for the reason, and one of the reasons is because of that small little pocket park. That tree's been there for over 100 years, as you've already heard. I don't know if any of you have anything like that that means that much to you, but it does to us. There's a special spring that has never been mentioned by our city or any of the staff that actually is underneath that tree, and that's why, most of the time, I don't think that it's even been taken care of by the city. They've trimmed it, in fact, the last time they trimmed it, I went running out to say that they were absolutely butchering it, which they were, but the tree came back and it looks as well as it ever did before. All we're trying to impress upon you, and what we've been doing for almost three years now, is to explain, we don't object to the rebuilding of the fire station or the library. We're in total commitment to that. All we've asked is that the city allow the tree to remain and that they build around it. For the price tag that they're estimating of the millions of dollars that they're going to spend to redo those buildings, I think within that budget, they could find a way to leave our tree. We're going to have to put up with all of the congestion, the stress, all of the construction that will go into those projects. And on top of that, we will not have our tree if they do it their way. We live there, we pay our taxes, we want the tree, so that's what we're asking all of you for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, speakers? Staff, any comments for the record? And, you know, a lot of, if we could maybe bring it back around to what we, is in front of us at this time, because, and what we're voting on tonight versus the bigger issue, no, thank you for sharing, you know, what's our purview tonight? And if you, any responses to some of the comments?
Sure, Chair Harris. Yeah, so just a reminder, the decision to approve the coastal development permit, that was made by the city council and has been appealed to the California Coast Commission. So that's currently on hold at the California Coast Commission. What's before you today is a minor change that was approved by staff and working in collaboration with the California Coast Commission to change the approved landscape plan of that approved CDP. So really, all we're focused on is the change in the landscape plan. And the main purpose of the change in the trees was to replace trees that were identified as not being suitable habitat for the herons with a different species that grow much larger, have larger branches that could better accommodate and are more suitable for nesting herons in the future. Because of the larger trees and the, we're actually proposing to install larger box-sized trees as well. That requires a larger planter area, which is the main cause for the changes in the parking lot layout as well, and that was one of the questions raised by Mr. Mosher. So it's a much larger tree specimen. And so, but that's really the purview of your view today, is that change in the landscape plan, minor change, and is it an appropriate change to the approved CDP that's currently under review by the coastal commission? I did want to just state that.
Just to clarity, it was appealed to the coastal commission?
Appealed.
Correct, so council approved it, appealed to coastal, worked with coastal, and now had to amend it, right?
Correct, so this is amending only the landscape component.
Just the landscape component, yes, just that piece, okay.
Correct. And then I also wanted to state that the standard for review for the coastal development permit is the California Coast Act, but also our certified local coastal program, which was certified in 2017. City Council Policy G1 is not a requirement or a criteria for coastal development permits. Our local coastal program does define what constitutes ESHA, or environmentally sensitive habitat area. Our biologist has gone through and detailed and explained why the removal of the blue gum does not impact ESHA. It's exempt because it's already a developed site, but additionally, we've gone through and gone through the different criteria, determined that the tree itself is not, does not constitute Also, I wanted to just note that while the trees will take some time to mature, the biology report does identify a number of other suitable trees nearby that are large and mature that will serve as suitable interim habitat while these trees do grow on site.
So, and just to clarify, the reason for the loss of the parking spot, it looked like you did widen the base area as to, for more mature at this time planters?
Correct.
Planted trees?
To allow for more mature trees and a larger, these trees will have a larger root base as well.
Does the appellant want to make any brief comments? Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for discussion and action. Any comments to start, commissioners? Commissioner Elmar?
So, appreciate everyone's involvement and interest, and I think it's a fantastic part about our city that everyone's so passionate about the landscape, the agriculture, it's phenomenal. We're discussing what we are opining on as a minor change of the landscape plan of the conditionally used permit, that's appeal. Based upon that box of what we're looking at, I can find, make the findings to support staff's recommendation to find the appeal inconsistent, just to be very clear on this. And I am happy to make a motion to deny the appeal and affirm the community development director's approval.
Hold a second.
Wait a second. Whoa, 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 what are we? It's a, it's a motion to deny the appeal and affirming the community development director's approval for the staff. Are we approving?
You're approving the denial.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving on.
Okay, item number five, motions for, motion for reconsideration. Okay, see none. Item number five, report by the community development director, a request for matters which a planning commission member would like placed on a future agenda.
Hi, it's Chair Harris. I just want to note, for the October 9th Planning Commission meeting, staff will be providing an update to the commission regarding our efforts on the general plan update. This is a program we've been working on for a number of years now, and we've made a lot of good effort and progress. Our general plan advisory committee and general plan steering committee have gotten us to a point to where we have a number of draft elements being prepared for public review. Staff has been presenting our efforts to various boards and commissions, especially with presenting the elements that are within their purview. And so for the planning commission, we'll be providing you an update, overall status update, as well as a request for your input on the draft land use element and safety element as well before we progress and provide the draft elements for public review and do a community open. So we'll just be providing an update and just seek your input.
Okay. So that's the October 9th meeting, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on these items? Item number six, request for excused absences. Are there any requests for excused absences, commissioners? Okay. Roger.